Okay.
All right. I'd like to call the order of the common council meeting for March 23rd, 2021 at 6:05 PM. Roll call.
Alderman Madden.
Here.
Alderman Kubaki.
Here.
Alderman Engelhardt is not here. Alderman Capusta is not here. Alderman Terrence.
Here.
Alderman Hamel.
Here.
Alderman Wolf.
Here.
And Mayor Petfalski is here. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Communications and miscellaneous, I'm sorry, communications from the mayor's office. I'm sorry. Statement of public notice?
This meeting was noticed in accordance with the open meeting law.
And I jumped way ahead on this. Public comment. Anyone here wish to make a comment in front of the common council on any agenda item? Going once, twice. All right, now we're moving on to communications from the mayor's office, and I have something I have to read to you. The city of Muskego must annually submit an MS4 municipal separate storm sewer system permit to the Wisconsin DNR by March 31st of each year. The city of Muskego has submitted their MS4 permit. Please see, there's an attached document. A stipulation of this permit is to inform, notify elected officials of this MS4 permit as well as posting it to the city Muskego website. So consider yourself notified. That saves us doing a separate resolution and having a vote on it. Moving on to consent agenda. Could I have a motion for that? It's approval of the minutes from March 9th, 2021, approval of operators licenses, approval of resolution 027, 2021, approval of facilities use agreement between the Muskego Norway School District and the city of Muskego, resolution 028, 2021, approval of developers agreement for PEGARL LP, resolution 029, 2021, establishing traffic regulations, no parking signs on Park Drive, resolution 030, 2021, award of bid for the 2021, 2022 Parks Boulevard's terraces and facilities landscaping and game day field preparation, and resolution 035, 2021, approval of cobblestone court developers agreement.
Move to approve and gross except for 029.
I'd also like to take off the 034.
034 is not in there.
Oh, was that, okay, I went out too far, sorry.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that passes unanimously. Moving on to.
029 was pulled.
What?
He pulled 029.
Yes, that's what I'm going to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No. Moving on to resolution 029, 2021, establishing traffic regulations, no parking sign on Park Drive. Can you get it to the floor?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Now you can go.
I'm not a sign guy. Let me frame this. The people at Bay Breeze had complained of trespassers going on their beach during the summertime. I don't know if it occurred once, twice, 10 times, or if it's a daily event. Their proposal is to put up no parking signs, but I think between 10 o'clock at night and 6 o'clock in the morning along a short stretch on the west side of Park, about 200 feet north of Janesville, for another about 200 feet. Across the street are a series of homes with very limited parking in front of those homes. The chief of police made a comment, which I thought was remarkable, that they've never been called about trespassers on the beach. Well, someone's on my beach, and certainly we'll call the police, but they've never been called. His suggestion, which I tend to agree with, is if this happens again, call the police. They'll take the appropriate action, either cite people or speak with them. I'm thinking this is probably a group of children, kids, high school kids. When the police approach a group of high school kids once, it sometimes takes, it spreads around, and people just don't do that anymore. So his suggestion was if it doesn't work by calling the police, then you can always put up signs in the future. And I tend to agree with that. I'd rather see us hold off on the signs, call the police if this does occur. I think it's going to cause a lot of problems for those series of homes on the east side of Park, all the way down to Lake Street. Lake Street has no parking on it, and from Lake Street going south, there's no parking for the first 75 feet or so on the west side. So my suggestion was let the police do their work, leave these signs out of it. If, we can always do this in the future if it does become a problem.
During the media, I was kind of torn about this because no parking, is that really going to stop somebody from trespassing? Hard to say. If they really want to go, get there, they'll find another way to get there, but I do think having no parking signs is another tool in their tool belt. Because if they do see cars there, the police can go up there and check to see if people are on the beach without being called first. Maybe I think what we can do is review this after, you know, leave it, the parking signs and with enforcement, because I think you need to have both. You cannot have the signs without enforcement. So you need to have the enforcement, like the chief said. But maybe we should come back and review it after the Fourth of July weekend.
So you're saying put the signs there and take them down?
Yes, put the signs there.
I think I'd rather have you wait if you're going to do one of the two.
Have them wait?
Well, I mean, putting signs up and taking them down is, I don't think that's the way to do it, but.
I don't know what it goes into taking them down. It doesn't.
I don't remember once in the last 10 years we took signs down.
Because I would like to revisit this maybe after the Fourth, after a busy weekend, and see if there were a lot of instances where people were trespassing and the police came up there.
Why don't you just, I mean, one thing you could do is just defer this whole thing till like the last meeting in July? Or we only have one in July, do we have two?
I think there's one in July.
Or the first one in August. You could defer it until such a time to, you can see if there's been problems. That way you don't have to re-go through this whole thing.
The latest meeting in July.
Sitting. And it also gives, I mean, I'm sure Tom would like to argue his point on it. He's not here.
And I was here for the meeting, and I heard some concerning things as we were leaving too, when somebody said, well, you know, the people across the street, they can park there because cops can check the plates and realize they live there. And that doesn't work.
No.
You're either going to get ticketed or not. So I think it is going to.
If it says no, it says no.
Yeah, right. So I think we should defer it and let the police do their job first by having people call when there's somebody on there and see if they can get rid of the problem that way. And then we'll come back in August or whatever and re-look at it.
Is that agreeable?
Yeah, I think so. I guess one concerning thing that was brought up is nobody has ever called the police. So how can they enforce it if they don't know and just sit there and complain about it? I was just thinking at the time that the signs would give them an extra tool to work with.
Well, it was my thought too, if they, police know that there was no parking there and they're driving by and they see cars parked there, it just gives them reason to investigate, but if they're not calling the police on their own complaints, you know, it's something.
Even with, you know, without not having any signs there, if police drive by, you know, they could still go up there and I guess investigate if they see cars parked there.
Yeah.
I always been under the impression that the city wants to put as little amount of signage out as possible. And if we need it, we need it, we make the exception and do it, but if we don't need it, we don't do it. So I think that rather than bring this back to council, maybe we should go back to public safety or something before it comes back up to us. It's their recommendation to tell us if we really need to put signs up or public works or whatever. I just know when I've been on those committees, it's always been, we don't want to put signs up. You know, we want to keep it as sign-free as possible. If it's needed, it's needed, but we can send it back down for, and have it talked about back in July, I think, in whatever meeting it's called now.
I don't know if we need to really send it back down.
From a process standpoint, the committee did make a recommendation unanimously to approve it.
Yeah, we don't have to accept it.
I think if council's got an issue with it and you don't want to just outright kill it without having it to go through that process again, I think the best thing to do would be just defer till the either July or August meeting. If there's going to be problems in that, you know, that, in that area, it's going to rear its head by then, and then you can act appropriately if you think this is a tool to use, or you can kill it at that point. It's, I guess it's not saying outright no to the people who asked for it, but it's not saying yes. It's just kind of like, let's wait and see, which I think might be appropriate in this case.
It's a good suggestion.
So if that's appropriate, somebody make that motion and we can vote on that.
So moved, whatever the mayor said.
So July or August meeting, which one?
July. First meeting in August.
Who's going to write up what he said?
So the motion is to defer this item until the first meeting in August. Who made the second?
It was me.
John did.
My second.
Discussion on the motion? Oh, there is no, now, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anybody's deferred? Thank you. All right, moving on to new business, resolution 032, 2021, a resolution to terminate tax increment districts eight and nine.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing done. Can we have a roll call vote?
Alderman Madden?
Yes.
Alderman Kubaki?
Yes.
Alderman Terrence?
Yes.
Alderman Hamel?
Yes.
Alderman Wolf?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Thank you. Resolution 033, 2021, recognition of police chief Richard Wren's service to the city.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? So I'm going to be, I'm planning, there is a resolution here for you to sign. They'll sign it except for the two that are here. We'll present, I'm going to present this to him on April 16th. There's going to be an event here in the council chambers during the day. You all get invites for it. Figure that'd be the best, it's his last day here. We're going to have a little lunch and things like that, so it'd be a good day to present it. That's why he's not here. That's why I didn't invite him at least. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you, chief. Resolution 034, 2021, denial of claims for Matthew and Daniel McCarroll, Trish Crocker, Michael and Sherry Hallman, Richard and Virginia Randa, Michael and Susan Hawkeye, and Michael and Jean Reitz.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
I see this letter went out, and it doesn't say that we're having a meeting on a certain date that these people can actually come and express their opinions about what happened. So I would like to defer this and then have them contacted to see if they would like to voice their opinion. Plus, we're missing two aldermen on top of it, as a city to weigh in on such a big, I mean, something that doesn't happen, or hasn't happened in that area. And I'm concerned because I was told that this was clogged up by construction material, including a manhole cover, which actually, which actually caused it. I don't know if it's true or not. I'd like to hear some on that. And I think that because of the school being built in that area, and this has not really happened there, that I have concerns that if we were responsible or not for this, I'd like to hear from all the people if they'd like to come to a meeting.
Not to weigh in on your motion to defer, I just want to do a correction. The damage that you're citing was for a different claim, the manhole and the construction debris for sewer backup, it wasn't for this one.
Okay, I was told by the people here that they were told by somebody in the city that that's what happened and caused it.
They might have mixed up when we, I know I talked to one of the gentlemen there and explained that we had something like that similar happen in a different part of the city, and it was from what I discussed.
Yeah, I think that was before you even got involved with this, that I heard that, but.
But that's not, that wasn't the cause.
It doesn't matter. Okay, that's good to know.
I just wanted to correct that.
That's good to know, because that's what I was under the belief of, but I still have concerns that how this has happened in an area that has never happened before.
But it's been investigated, I guess. I mean, it's been thoroughly investigated.
But there's nothing in the letter that tells the people that we're going to be telling them that we're voting on it today. I mean, we're just saying we're denying it on a letter, but it doesn't tell them how it's denied. And today would be the day it would be denied. So I'm just having, you know, I just think that we're not being upfront to the people. They should have a right to come if they'd like to come and voice their opinion.
Is there any concerns on timing?
Yes. We have to.
Christine, was this, turn your microphone on next.
Yeah, we have a certain time before we.
We only have 120 days from the date that the claim gets put in to notify them that we're going to deny the claim. If we do that, it knocks the statute of limitations down to just six months for them to be able to sue us. If we don't notify them in that time, then the regular statute of limitations applies, and that's six years.
But we did notify them, right? So this is, the letter's not a notification?
That's from the insurance company. You have to, as a group, notify them that you're denying the claim.
Right, the clerk, you have to do it, and then the clerk sends out a letter, and I normally prepare those letters the day after.
This letter here didn't go out to them?
It did, from the insurance company.
The one that has your name up on the top? I'm looking at March 18th, 2021. I'm just confused. This one went out to them?
No, the, what you're looking at with my name on there, that's just for you. That's for council. The letter that went out to them is the letter that each insurance, that the insurance company put out to each individual. And that's just saying that the insurance company is recommending to you guys to deny the claim. You still have the power to do whatever you want, but the time for people, I mean, people normally look at the agenda, and that's how they know to come here tonight. So it was noticed for tonight. I really expected people to be here.
Well, that's what was my concern. Nobody's here, and it doesn't sell them that it's going to be, you know, with the coronavirus and the way the government works, I've always erred on the side that people are not informed enough to show up for the meetings, especially with something of this size. And I think that I just believe they should have the opportunity to understand how the government works and be here for it. I mean, I know we put a notice out, but they're not entrenched in the government, you know, so it's other than a letter coming out.
How many of these people have called the city?
All of them.
All of them?
Yeah.
Yeah, they've all been in contact.
All six of them. I've talked to a few over the phone. But again, I can't sit here today and recommend that you don't deny this because the statute of limitations, the statute of limitations is in six years. So then anytime between now and the next six years, you can be sued on these.
When does that limitation, the shorter limitation expire?
I think it's, do you remember what day it is tomorrow or sometime at the end of this month? Because the way our meetings are set up, if you don't do it today, you'd have to call a special meeting. When is the last one, Christine? Was it March?
I don't remember.
I don't have the exact day. It's in March. So we wouldn't be having another meeting prior to you having, to deny this. So that's the reason why I put it on tonight. It had to go on tonight so I could get the notice out to each individual.
So each of these people have been spoken to by some member of the, of the city?
I've talked to a few. I don't know if you've talked to a few.
I've talked to Ham, Hallman.
So I've talked to Crocker. I don't know if, and I've talked to Hawkeye. I don't know if every single person has been notified, but they got their letter from the insurance company. What they could have done or should have done is knew that this was coming up, so you look at the agenda. That's how people get noticed. You look at the agenda, and then they know to come. Or any of you could have contacted them and said it's on the agenda tonight. But there's no, nothing that I or the city has to do to tell them, hey, this is your day. It's just like anything else. It gets noticed on the agenda, and people want to come, they come. If they don't come, they don't come. So I don't know why they're not here, but again, I can't sit up here and advise you not to do this today because of the statute of limitations.
Well, you know, shame on us for only having a day to do this for the people, you know, the residents of Muskego. And when you get an insurance letter in the mail telling you it's denied, they're probably thinking, oh, well, it's a done deal. I mean, why would they think that the city's going to change their mind if that's what they got? Without having a, I mean, I don't know why we, they're not notified. I would have thought that would have been in the letter.
Well, and I'm not arguing with you, but the second paragraph says, "We recommend the city of Muskego disallow your claim." So it's not saying that your claim is denied. It's saying, "We recommend that the city of Muskego disallow it." And the next step then is to put it on a council meeting, which is why.
Well, if you understand the way the government works, and the average citizen is worried about fixing their home from damage, paying their taxes, and having their garbage picked up, and that's about the most. I mean, the two last things are the most people want, is the garbage picks up, you know, the streets cleaned, whatever, you know, it's just, I just feel that we're doing a disservice, and we're creating a problem by trying to push this through because we only have a day to do it. I don't like the process, good or bad, if that's the way it works. I don't like the process of it. I think I would feel a little betrayed by the city if I was one of these people or if it happened to me at my house, you know.
Well, we could have taken it upon ourselves to contact these people. We didn't.
You're right, we didn't, but we get this on.
If they were in my aldermanic district, I would have called these people.
We get this on Friday, and I wasn't in town. And then what are you going to do? I mean, it's only my responsibility as a part-time person when we have a full-time staff here at City Hall to take care of a situation, where we have letters going out without telling anybody that there's a date coming up?
But it's been duly noticed. I mean, it's.
Okay, that's fine. I understand all that, but I still feel that as a, it's just not respectful to people.
Can I ask a question, I guess? If this room was filled with these six people, would you change your vote any? I mean, I've been involved in city government for 20-some years, not city government, but government, and been following city government for 20-some years. I've seen these things come forward. I've never seen them approved, because they shouldn't be.
Well, we had, we had one where we had a street that wasn't finished, and somebody defaulted, and they were no longer around, and we ended up finishing it and paying for it, and it was supposed to be the six or 13 houses on the street. So yeah, I've seen something similar.
Not like this, I haven't.
But it's still a claim, similar. It's a claim, and people were notified, and they showed up to the meeting, but anyway.
Let me, let me ask a question. At one time, the city had funds that were available to fund certain projects. And I know that they were kind of available for the Janesville Road area, and I believe in.
Was that CDs?
Yeah, CDA.
CD.
And I believe those funds were held in advance from the budget last year. Those are the unused funds, I think, that Rob, that you were talking about.
Oh, moving the money over into the budget?
Right.
Yeah, I forgot what you called it, yeah.
And the discussion came down to using those funds, a one-time funding source for ongoing areas. If those funds are available, and we could make those funds available to these homeowners, might be a good solution. I don't know if it's.
It's a bad precedent, I'll tell you that.
But we've used those funds before.
But not for, okay, so we've had sewer backups in the city of Muskego going back as far as I can remember. There is insurance that you, I mean, that any good insurance agent should be telling their client they should have, and they should be making them aware of the limitations that some policies have. Because some policies, you can only get 5,000. But a good insurance agent should be notifying their clients, letting them know that if you have a sewer backup, it's not the city's responsibility, because it's not. If we do this, what you're referring to, that's, what does that tell people that this has happened to in the past or in the future? I mean, this, this is, this is part of homeownership, and I.
You're right.
I am, I would, I rue the day that if I ever get a sewer backup in my basement, because there's probably not much more disgusting things I can think that could happen to my house that I would have no fault of my own over, but there are some things that happen in life that you have to be prepared for and you, that you, and part of that is by having the proper insurance for it. And I know these people did nothing wrong, but neither did the city, neither did the taxpayers of the city of Muskego. They did nothing wrong as well. This is just, you know, it's, it's, it's something that happens unfortunately. Now, if there was something that we did, that we knew about, or neglected maintenance purposefully in that area versus other areas, yes, then you, then I would say we have some culpability, but that's not the case here. It was investig, if that was the case, our insurance company would have actually covered it, so we would have been fine. The insurance company investigated all this, found out that, no, we didn't do anything neglectful. We weren't responsible for anything. So what you'd be admitting for, I don't care where the money comes from, you know, rich uncle or, you know, the tax base, we're paying something out that we have no liability or responsibility for, and it's not our money, it's the taxpayers' money.
Okay, I just want to just say one point here, and then we'll round this all up. I'm just sad that they're not here. We get this stuff on Friday. We have the meeting on Tuesday, and it's due tomorrow. That's just, you know, why can't I ask for a deferral? I didn't have to notify these people. I should be able to come here and ask for a deferral. And if we got it, then we could have the people come, but we can't, I mean, almost being told I shouldn't be asking for a deferral because we have to get the letters out, or we could be sued. So the process, it's not going smoothly.
I'll grant that to you.
It's not smooth.
I'll grant it to you, Rob.
That's my whole dilemma.
I have no answer for you besides the fact that the insurance company did just notify us, you know, we got the sign at the next meeting as soon as we could. And I'll, you know, I know when you assume what it means, but as much as these people were in contact with the city throughout this whole process, I assume they knew when this was based on everything else, because they've been on top of everything else all the way through.
But the point is, the point is.
And I did warn them that this was.
Tomorrow it's due.
I get that.
That's the, see, I should be able to come here and defer it.
Yeah, I'll take responsibility.
But I should be able to come here and ask, and even lose that battle of asking for a deferral without having a dilemma put on it that's creating the problem that I can't even ask for the deferral. I mean, the letter's dated the 15th, so it's not like the insurance company gave back in January. Like, the letter was eight days ago from the insurance company, so.
It's not unusual for the insurance company to take the whole 120 days and notify us. This is just, unfortunately, I hear you, I feel bad for these people. It's unfortunately just how the system works, and I know you're saying it's all quick and everything.
So I'm going to add one last thing here, and then we can move on. My job as an alderman is to fight for the residents, and my fight maybe is not to approve this, but my fight is to be, let them be heard for it, and let the process work. And we're not letting the process work. We're stopping the process because we have a due date. And I think that it's all way too fast, and it's just not fair. And of course, life's not fair, but it really is not fair that we're in this last-second dilemma. We should have a little bit more leeway of time, and for whatever reason, and if that's how it works, that's how it works. But I'm just sad that nobody's here to be able to express their self, and we're at a dilemma they can't.
And I hear you on all that, and like I said, I assumed for as engaged as they were throughout this whole process that they were well aware of what that letter meant, and that they would have followed it, but I, it's on me. I'll take responsibility for that.
Well, I could have notified them too, but the dilemma is, it's just so quick. You know, I mean, we get our notifications on Friday, and if you're lucky, you get to start looking at them some days on Saturday. And I just, like I said, I thought I could do my due process and ask for a deferral, but.
Okay, that's all I got.
I'm in that same, kind of that same category that the mayor had mentioned. I don't think it would make a difference if they were here. I feel really bad, but there's a side of, yes, we have to look out for residents, but there's another 20,000-plus people that we would then be pulling resources from to pay for somebody else when we're not liable. So it sucks to say no, and it sucks to say, sorry, you, $40,000 in damage, we aren't responsible for it, but we aren't. And so it wouldn't change my vote, but I certainly would sympathize and hope that never happens to my home either. So I don't think a deferral for me would make much of a difference if they were here or they weren't.
Any other? Hearing done. Roll call vote?
Okay.
So we're voting to approve the denial, right? Okay.
Alderman Madden?
Yes.
Alderman Kubaki?
Yes.
Alderman Terrence?
Yes.
Alderman Hamel?
Yes.
Alderman Wolf?
No.
All right, it's been approved four to one. Thank you. Moving on to license approvals. Approval of change of agent Sarah Drenson for.
Did you do a committee report?
Finance committee.
I'm sorry. I did not, I'm sorry. Review of committee reports, Finance Committee and Public Works and Safety Committee for July 20th, 28th, August 25th, November 17th, and December 15th. I guess you guys haven't had those here in a while. We don't approve them.
No.
Just saying it. All right, now we're moving on to license approval. Approval of change of agent for Sarah Drenson for a Class A liquor license held by Ultramar Food LLC, DBA Pick 'n Save.
Move to approve.
Second.
I think Madden made the motion, seconded. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Approval of a Class C dance hall license and Class B license to sell fermented malt beverages and intoxicating liquor for Wisconsin Youth Sports Association, DBA Sports Development, Nicole Lutz agent located at W-160, South 6369 Commerce Drive.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
I'm very uncomfortable with this. It's not like we're just asking for beer and wine here. And it does say youth, which implies it's going to be mostly kids. And I think that the license they're asking for allows them much more than they really need in many ways.
Comments, questions, anyone else?
Is there anyone here from that organization?
Yes. Would one of you two like to come up? Maybe explain to the council what your vision is here and...
Sure. Hi, everyone. I'm Nicole Lutz. So we are under the Wisconsin Youth Sports Association, but we have recently just moved out of West Dallas from less than 11,000 square feet into a 36,000-square-foot building. So it's massive, and our operating expenses are much larger than we had prior. So we're looking at other ideas to generate revenue for our nonprofit, and one of them is doing other programs outside of our youth. So those programs will be developed from the April to August months, when the youth are actually traveling or outside for their activities. So these will be programs mostly for adults, held for adults in the evenings, or programs for certain things like baseball card trading shows that are mostly done through organizations that have facilities the size of ours. So offering out beverages, alcoholic beverages, just allows us to generate more revenue for our facility and keep up with the growing expenses that we are incurring.
Does anyone have any questions for Mrs. Lutz?
So I don't think... I mean, if they're granted that license, we have no say about what time they decide they're going to use it or not. So if we grant the license, they can use it. You decide to use it when there's a youth game going on. We can't prevent that.
All right, would this change their VSL?
I don't think so.
Wouldn't have to plan for a VSL amendment?
I don't think so.
So, no.
Yeah, and that's what concerns me, because when you're looking at making money and you see an opportunity, you're not thinking about, oh, this is mostly kids. You're thinking about, I can... Especially when you find how much you can bring in with the adults, and then you think, well, if we could just add this to the kid games. I guess I just... I'm just not comfortable with it being in the youth. I mean, maybe if you came in and you said, you just wanted beer and wine, you know, that's a different license, if I'm not mistaken, for just...
Which you guys could amend to just give... You don't... You could amend that today if you wanted to limit it. That's within your authority to do that. You know, one of the things to be cognizant of either way is they are one of at least... There's at least two other youth indoor baseball facilities in Mesquite. So word travels. If it's a good fundraising idea for them, it might be a good fundraising idea for the other ones, so just keep that precedent in mind of what's going on. Their facility, I'll grant you, is much more grandiose, nicer. It's the state of the earth. I mean, it's really what any 12-year-old boy would like to die and wake up yet. It is a nice facility, but there are two other ones in town here that, you know, I could see them asking for something similar. So just keep that in mind with whatever you decide.
Would beer and wine be sufficient for what your plans are?
Well, I think there's opportunity in either license. You know, I think, you know, the concerns are valid, but we planned to be responsible when we have those specific events that are more geared towards adults and those over 21. You know, I look at it more like a bowling alley-type atmosphere, where there's activities for kids to do as well as adults, and that is something that we've talked about as a board as well. So I think there's an opportunity. Again, we're just grateful to be here, so I'm open to hearing, you know, what you guys all approve.
Well, I remember being involved in sports and going out to Waukesha by the airport. I can't think of the name there.
Center Court's a good example.
And they have alcohol.
They still do, yes.
But you can't bring it out into the courts, at least the basketball courts. I don't know what else they have there. I can't remember, but it's been a long time.
They have it limited to their food area.
What's that?
They have it limited to their food area there.
Right, and they have a full liquor line. I mean, I don't... Your little drawing here doesn't give me much to go on comparison to... I believe the other one that opened close to Maguano, it's now a firework place, also served alcohol. I can't think of the name of that place. That closed up.
Yeah, the bar part was long next, but I don't think they serve...
Not fireworks. I think it's a union hall or something.
It's a union hall, but yes, I know exactly.
They had alcohol as well.
But just in the bar area, I don't think they had a sports court.
So this doesn't give me much... I don't understand really what's going on with this drawing.
Yeah, there's two areas. We have two concession stands, basically. One is in the facility itself, and then one is a private rental area on the other side of the building. And so there's two... It would be hard to say the bar area, because that's 36... That's the whole field area and access into where activities are being...
Field being outside field?
No, there's no outside field. It's all indoors, yes.
See, I don't understand this whole picture, so...
Yes, yes.
Okay, so they can take the alcohol throughout the whole facility, is your plans?
Yes.
And like she said, Eileen said, this is called a youth center?
No, it's... We're called Halo Athletics. So our nonprofit is the Wisconsin Youth Sports Association, the WYSA, and we do business as the Milwaukee Angels and the Halo facility. So there's two separate entities, basically, under the umbrella of our nonprofit.
Okay, because they already listed as Wisconsin Youth Sports Association.
That's the... Yes, that's our umbrella. So that's the main organization.
And it's a nonprofit organization?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And then the Halo facility is a separate entity than Milwaukee Angels Baseball, which is our youth program. And so basically, the Milwaukee Angels rent from our facility. They rent their time and space. The Halo facility operates as its own and wants to bring in more organizations. Like, we plan to meet with the Department of Mesquite to see if they can run programs through our organization. It's just not for the youth baseball. They actually are paying the facility to have their time there.
Maybe you can help us out by maybe stepping back a little bit and reformulating this. Give us a better idea of what you're looking at. This drawing doesn't tell me anything. And maybe containing the use of alcoholic beverages to segregated areas, because I just don't feel comfortable saying, yeah, car to block, you're good. But maybe you can maybe frame this a little bit better.
Yeah. Well, so the concession stand in the field area is... The activities are going on in that area. Just think of it as a big square. So once you leave the office building area, it goes into the facility, and that's where the concession stand is. So the doors open, and all you see is baseball fields and baseball cages. That is one area. The other one is off to the side. It's completely private. That is more for private rentals to do parties, or birthday parties, or 50th birthday parties, or whatever it may be. So there's two separate areas that we're looking for approval.
Would that... This license apply to both of those areas?
Yes, I believe so.
The application would cover the whole facility?
The whole facility.
So, and not to... I'm not piling on here. I just want to make sure that they're all aware of all this. Granting the license as applied right now would also give them gaming machines.
Which means...
Slot machines.
Lot machines. Or, yeah.
Now, that can be restricted. You guys could restrict that if you want. I'm not saying it's good or bad. I just want to make you... I just don't want you guys to...
Again, I've been in facilities...
The gaming machines on right now. Jill told me I could do it whenever I wanted, so I said no at this point.
But it would give you the right, unless they restrict it.
And I've seen that in places where they sell those scratch-off lotto's more than anything.
So I just want to make sure that you guys, if you guys approve it, that all of a sudden you hear there's slot machines at the kids' baseball thing that you're not shocked. So just go in this with your eyes open.
Now, does that... I don't know, Jeff, does that... Slot machines have to be in a certain area, right? Probably closer to... Or they can be anywhere in the...
Anywhere in the licensed area.
Wherever the license is, so it could be anywhere. You know, it's hard to visualize this.
That's my problem, is the visualization. I don't really have a problem with the whole thing. I just like to understand how it works, so I would not have a problem with the whole thing.
So picture this room. You walk in, and they have an area, which would be like the area back there, that are the offices and lobby area. Then you go into this huge room that literally has bedding cages and a full regulation size infield, like in this corner. And then there's a wall, almost like where the council thing is there, and that's like the weight room and that private area they're talking about. So that's pretty much the layout of the whole thing.
And there's seating to watch the games? Is that what there is?
There is, yeah.
There is? Oh, where was that? I missed that.
It's... Well, you would stand... We just got the stools in, so they were... It's a countertop that goes along the fencing area, and it's not a lot of seating, but it is... There is seating out there.
So I kind of like the idea that Kevin came up with. It gives us more information. I mean, there's two things we can do, is you can go back with some pictures. You have the facilities done?
Yeah.
Or, like we've done with building the Parkland Mall buildings, we actually toured it. If you guys want to do a tour, I don't know, to feel comfortable. Else, you can approve it or disapprove it today, so...
I mean, I'm just thinking through the places I've been, and like was mentioned, there's a number of parks, and indoor/outdoor, when your kids are playing, and they're, you know, making margaritas at the stand. So there's a... It is a thing that's there, and I think that bowling alley was a good example, right? You go with your family, and some people are at the bar, some people are at the snack stand. I think when done well, it fits, and it gives them that revenue stream that the other side is when they're not. Parents usually bring a cooler, and in the cooler is, you know, it's mommy's stuff, right? That is what it is. You're laughing, but it's true.
Yeah, mommy's water.
Yeah, mommy's water is in the cooler. Or like, when we go to Bloom and play, the parents are up at the pavilion, and they've all got beers. So I mean, whether that's the plan for the park, that's what they're doing. So I think that shift to these indoor facilities, there's going to be more and more of that, and having the ability for that facility to be all-in-one, to have the ability to provide refreshments, whether it's for the kids, for the adults, and to have them there allows them to, I think, really create a place that people want to stay at and want to be at. So I'm a fan. I know that if you're saying, hey, more of a detailed written plan would help, then maybe that's something we could ask for, to say, hey, come back to us with, take some pictures, give us an outline, here's the events we're looking at doing. I saw their drawing, but I've also... Oh, I've seen the facility, yeah, it's nice. Yeah.
Yeah. Another example is anywhere in Wisconsin Dells, like the Woodside Sports Complex.
Oh, I've been there too.
It's a full bar, full alcohol.
That's true.
There's kids there. Also, the baseball fields, which is mostly youth, has a full bar and alcohol served outdoors as well.
Same thing down there.
Yeah, and that's not... Again, it's not mostly... It's not for the youth part of it, right? Our main concern is the revenue we get from adult programs that we can build over time, but we do want a broader license. And there will be times, like when we run our annual fundraiser, that youth is there, and there is, you know, there are parents that are indulging in alcoholic beverages. So, but overall, it's more for our adult programs throughout summer to kind of bring that constant revenue stream in for us.
Well, I have to say that after seeing... Thank you, Mayor, for showing me the picture there. It makes me more familiar with what you're trying to accomplish here. And I tell you what, when I used to take my kids there, I would have a drink, so...
We all stuck them in red solo cups.
But not when I was coaching.
Depends on the team.
So I guess, you know, there's a number of things in front. You could outright approve the thing as presented. You could change it to a fermented or multi-beverage only. You can limit if you're going to allow the gaming machines. I mean, you have all different options, so I'm just finding that's more good for our...
I'll tell you what, I'm not really a beer drinker, and if I went there and they told me it was only beer and wine, I probably wouldn't be as happy, and, you know?
You're never happy.
No.
Oh, golly.
Listen, I'll be happy when the meeting's over. I'm okay with it as is, but I am too.
I guess I'd like to see the facility.
We'd love to have you.
And I don't think a tour would be a bad idea. I'd also like to see some limitations as far as where alcoholic beverages can be taken. And I know in some facilities, they can't go further than, you know, XY or whatever, and I think that would be helpful for me in, you know, granting a license. So I guess my recommendation is, you know, I'd like to see us hold on to this, take a little tour of the place. Maybe you guys think about limitations as far as where alcoholic beverages can travel to in your facility. I can just see Rob hitting the ball off a tee, you know, with a martini sitting there or something. I don't know.
And what would you be doing in the outfield?
Martini?
Yeah.
I said, what would you be doing in the outfield?
I'd be having a Manhattan, so...
Are you making a motion to defer, or...
No, I think we should vote on it.
Again, my suggestion would be that we do defer, take a tour, have you guys create some limitations, and I'll make that motion.
I'd second that motion.
The motion is to defer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Motion to defer has been denied.
I'll make a motion and accept it as is.
It's already on the table like that.
Sure.
That's there.
It's already on it.
Oh, okay.
So, any further discussion on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Passes three to two.
There we go. That was a long process. It worked, though.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Voucher approval.
Motion to approve utility vouchers, the amount of $71,652.53.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve tax vouchers in the amount of $252,497.36.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes.
Motion to approve general fund vouchers, the amount of $315,231.48.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes.
And motion to approve wire transfers for payroll transmittals in the amount of $367,678.07.
It's your turn. Second.
Sorry. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. City officials reports, there are none tonight, except, actually, I take that back. The April... First meeting in April has been canceled as we discussed last meeting, so the next one, there'll just be one April meeting. Communications and miscellaneous business is authorized by law. Is there any updates on any of the liaisons? If we're going to be coming into our organizational meeting, if you want to be on certain committees, you make an appointment to talk to me, or come in and talk to me about what you want. I'm not necessarily going to grant what you want, but it's nice to know what you want. So it helps with those appointments, so make some time in the next month if you can do that. Future agenda items, anything? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned at 6:56.
Sure.
Oh, yeah. What he said.